Called the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2025-15 for August 5, 2025. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, it is in heaven, and give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy name is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained motion from council to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Second.
Second. Got a second? Any corrections, changes? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Good evening, Mr. Benson. How are you?
Good evening. President, we're here on Legislative Bill 2025-10. It's a public hearing. The bill is an act to authorize and empower Wycomico County, Maryland to borrow on the full faith and credit of Wycomico County, Maryland, an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $17,766,000. At the evidence such borrowing by the issue and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county, the proceeds thereof to be used by Wycomico County to finance, refinance, or reimburse the costs of certain projects for the following departments: emergency services, public library, construction -- I'm sorry. Emergency services, public library, construction, civic center, recreation and parks, and solid waste, and costs of planning, design, acquisition, construction of improvement, installation, renovation, rehabilitation, repairing, furnishing, and equipping of land, facilities, buildings, and structures, together with other costs and financing costs related thereto, as further described herein as applicable, including a bond contingency. Authorizing the issuance of sale of time to time of one or more series of general obligation refunding bonds in order to currently refund or advance, refund any of the bonds issued pursuant to the authority of this act, provided that the aggregate principal amount of each such series of refunding bonds does not exceed 130% of the aggregate principal amount of bonds refunded therefrom. Accepting all such bonds and refunding bonds from the provisions of Section 19-205 and 19-206 of the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland, authorizing the issuance and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bond anticipation notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $17,766,000 prior to an anticipation of the sale of any of the bonds authorized hereby. In order to finance, refinance, or reimburse costs of such projects on an interim basis, capitalize interest and financing costs, authorizing the county council to pass resolutions prior to issuing all or part of the bonds, refunding bonds, or bond anticipation notes in order to fix, prescribe, determine, or provide for the details of such obligations and the issuance and sale thereof, providing that all such bonds, refunding bonds, and bond anticipation notes shall be general obligations accounted to which the faith and credit of the county are pledged, and authorizing annual appropriations to pay the principal and interest on such obligations, and the levying of taxes to meet said appropriations. Subject to a lawful limitation of the county's taxing power set forth in the charter, as that taxing power may relate to such obligations, providing for the disbursement of the proceeds of the bonds, refunding bonds, or bond anticipation notes authorized hereby, providing certain rules of construction, and that provisions of this act should be liberally construed, providing that such provisions of the act shall be separable, and generally relating to issuance of sales of such bonds, refunding bonds, or bond anticipation notes, and authorized hereby.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. This time we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill 2025-10. If you have any comments you'd like to make in regard to this specific piece of legislation, go to the podium. Please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none. That concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2025-10. Entertained motion from council to approve Legislative Bill Number 2025-10?
To move. Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. We'll do a roll call. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed will say nay. Starting with Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilman Shields.
Aye.
Councilman Ennis.
Aye.
Vice President Merritt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill Number 2025-10 passes unanimously. Mr. Benson?
Second item is a public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2025-11, which is an emergency act. Add new sections to the Wycomico County Code to codify the operating days, hours, and locations of county sanitary landfill convenience centers and recycling centers to require compliance by all commercial haulers. They add definitions to prohibit the unlawful disposal of solid waste originating from outside of Wycomico County, and provide penalties for violations. So here for a public hearing, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. At this time, we'll open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2025-11. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this specific legislation, come to the podium. Please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none. That concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2025-11. Entertained motion from council to approve Legislative Bill Number 2025-11?
To move. Second.
There's a second. Discussion. Yeah, I think we have some amendments that we were after several work sessions on this and discussions.
We have several.
I know we do have -- Mr. Savy is here. Mr. Adam Corey is here, as well as Mr. Illuminati. If you want to come to the table, please do. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Good evening. Adam Corey, Acting Landfill Superintendent.
Andrew Illuminati, Department of Law.
Good evening. Mike Swaby, Deputy Director, Public Works.
Evening, everybody. Any council questions or discussion? Yes, Dave?
Okay. I've got several amendments. First one, I move to amend Section 156-3 to strike in second -- excuse me, to strike the second sentence in subsection B and subsection D in full.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes unanimously. Any other amendments?
I move to add subsection 156-4 with the following amendments in subsection C to add the beginning of the first sentence, if not otherwise ascertain to delete after the word "chapter," the phrase, until the garbage, rubbish, or refuge is disposed of in a lawful manner. And in subsection D, strike the word "contractor" and insert "commercial hauler."
Motion's just second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes unanimously.
Third, I move to add subsection 156-5 with the following amendments. In the title, delete violations and, as well as to delete subsection A in full and replace with a new subsection A to read as follows. A penalty. Any person or commercial hauler who, in the opinion of the Director of the Department of Public Works or the Director's Designee, disposes of out-of-county solid waste at a Wycomico County solid waste facility shall be subject to the following penalties. The Director of the Department of Public Works or the Director's Designee is hereby authorized to issue citations for civil infractions as follows. A. For the first offense, the person or commercial hauler shall receive a written warning and be placed on one-year probation period. B. For a second offense, written the one-year probationary -- within the one-year probationary period committed before October 1, 2025, any person, commercial hauler, shall be guilty of a civil infraction punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000 or $2,500 as an offense that occurs on or after October 1, 2025. C. For a third offense, written the -- within the one-year probationary period committed before October 1, 2025, any person or commercial hauler shall be guilty of civil infractions punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000 or $5,000 for an offense that occurs on or after October 1, 2025. Excuse me. And an administrative penalty, suspension from utilizing any solid waste facility operated by Wycomico County for a period of three consecutive operating days. D. For a fourth offense, within the one-year probationary period committed before October 1, 2025, any person or commercial hauler shall be guilty of a civil infraction punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000 or $5,000 for any offense that occurs on or after October 1, 2025, and an administrative penalty prohibiting the utilization of a solid waste facility operated by Wycomico County. Number two, notice, the Director of the Department of Public Works or the Director's Designee shall provide--
Two A.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Two notice, A. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Director of the Department of Public Works or the Director's Designee shall provide the person or commercial hauler written notice of any penalty imposed pursuant to subsection B of this section. The notice shall include, I, the date, time, and location of violation; I, a description of the facts supporting the penalty; three, I's, the specific penalty imposed. I guess these are a Roman numeral. Four, the effective date of the penalty; and five, information regarding the right to appeal. And then B, the person or commercial hauler may appeal the penalty to the Wycomico Board of Appeals by filing a written notice of appeals with the Director of the Department of Public Works or the Director of the -- the Director's Designee within 10 days of the date of the notice. C, the imposition of any administrative penalties hereafter shall be stayed until the right to appeal is waived in writing. The time for the appeal has expired if an appeal is filed until the Board of Appeals issues a final decision, whichever is later. And D, reinstatement notwithstanding the penalty set forth in subsection B, an individual or commercial hauler who has been prohibited from utilizing any solid waste facility operated by Wycomico County may petition the Director or Public Works or the Director's Designee. reinstatement may be granted upon a showing of a change of circumstances, insur circumstances, including but not limited to a change in ownership of the business.
The motion's there. Second?
Second.
Motion's second. Discussion.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I have everything out. So in subsection A of 156-5, the previous subsection A is deleted in full, and it's being replaced with language that makes it $1,000 fine before October 1, 2025, and a $5,000 -- up to a $5,000 fine for an offense that occurs after October 1, 2025. And the Director of the Department of Public Works or the Director's Designee is the one authorized to issue the citations for the civil infractions, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then in subsection B, we're in the administrative penalty phase, and this is in addition to the civil infraction. And I want to make sure I understand. So for the first offense, it's one day. Is that correct?
For the first offense, it's a one-year probationary period.
Okay. And for a second offense, what is the amount of time?
The $1,000 or $2,500, depending on October -- the date of October 1, before or after.
And there's no penalty at all for, like, days to go to the -- to utilize the landfills?
Or the -- no penalty on -- yes, no penalties as far as prohibiting using the landfill.
Okay. And then for a third offense, what's the punishment?
The third offense is either the $1,000 or the $5,000, either before October 1 or after October 1, as well as three consecutive days where they are -- where the hauler will be banned from the landfill.
That's after the third offense?
That's the --
Within a one --
That's the third offense. That's the third offense. You're right.
Okay. And then for the fourth offense, it's the -- looks like it's just being prohibited from utilizing any solid waste facility?
It's still the $1,000 or $5,000 before or after October 1, as well as prohibiting them utilizing the facility altogether.
Okay.
Now, these are very similar to what we had prior to. And I know we've gone back between you and Laura and Bob and Adam, and we've gone back with many, several different variations, but this is what we've landed on today.
Okay. I would just express, from a legal standpoint, the only problem with the one-year period of probation is that the appeal may take more than a year. And so then there will never be a second offense, because appealing that decision will then lead to the Board of Appeals, which will be in about 60 days at the latest. And then they have the right at that point in time, by state law and county code, to then appeal to the circuit court, which then, for example, one that the Board of Appeals heard in May has a hearing date in October of this year. That's the earliest that we can get to court. But then that court has to issue an opinion, and then any party can appeal that decision to the appellate court of Maryland, which then can take even longer. So I don't think the one-year period actually has the deterrent effect, because as a matter of due process, it can take two years. So I would -- I would think two years would be a more appropriate period, because -- and ideally, no one's appealing, because they're just placed on probation for the first offense, then they just get in hands fine for the second offense. And the third offense, they only lose three days, three consecutive operating days. So there's not from the office that prosecutes civil citations and defends the decisions of the Board of Appeals, this lacks, just because of the due process, one year is difficult to have that additional, like, process. So, for example, somebody could -- this could go into effect, and then they could have a violation. Adam would issue a citation, and the very next day, they could do the same exact thing, and we're not into a second offense, because they'd say, I want to appeal to the Board of Appeals. So then we're just issuing warning after warning after warning. I mean, there are $1,000 fines, citations we can go to district court on for every violation, but from a prosecutorial perspective, that's sort of the issue with the fines at the lower stage in the one-year probationary period. I also understand that this is ideally temporary, and we're going to be able to put together rules and regulations that will override this in the coming weeks and turn that into a more concrete administrative penalty process.
Through a license. But-- I don't think we're talking about -- I don't think we're talking about concerning rules that are going to override this legislative bill. We certainly would want to see with the Department of Public Works, we would want to see them come up with some plans, specific plans on how they're going to initiate this, how they're going to do the inspections, how they're going to guarantee objectivity, and the processes and the individuals who are going to take part in that process. That's really what we're looking for. We don't -- I think the council is in agreement that we don't want to micromanage that far down with the department if we feel it's being done fairly. But in reference to your two years, I don't think that really changes the context of the overall bill itself, if the council's okay with that. We would need a motion then for a -- to amend the amendment as read by Councilman Ennis, that wherever it's -- wherever the notation is for a one-year probation, that will now be referenced as a two-year probationary period. We would need a mo--
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment to that amendment therefore passes unanimously.
And that, I think, is a matter -- Ms. Hurley, they still need a vote on the actual amendment. They voted--
We're not done yet.
-- on the amendment.
Right.
And they still need to -- okay. I believe that otherwise addresses the law department's concerns as to -- I would just note, there's been a significant reduction in waste that's been brought since there's been long, strong determination about penalties and what that means.
Traffic has slowed down since the 15th.
There's been significant -- that's what we want to see. We want to see--
That's why we're presenting it to the public, so the public's made aware of exactly what's going on. Any other discussions in reference to the amendment?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, Joe?
It's just a question. Okay. When they -- so they get the fine, whether it's $1,000 or $5,000, but they can appeal that. Do they have to pay that fine upfront and then appeal it to get their money back?
No.
Or they appeal it and the fine's not collected?
Correct.
Is there any way we can change that to make it--
The fine is a civil infraction. Civil infractions go to the district court, and it's handled under the rules that Maryland has as a relation to municipal infractions. And so the judge is going to determine when the fine's going to be paid, not legislated.
Okay. All right. That's fine.
Good question. Good, Joe.
Just a point of note here, the October 1 date is significant, because that's when the state changes their fine ceiling, right?
Correct.
Goes from $1,000 to $5,000?
That's correct.
Okay.
$5,000 is the ceiling, right?
Correct. And so there will probably be a point in time that will be before you for a number of other infractions, nuisance complaints, that are currently at $1,000, asking to revisit to raise to $5,000. Good. Any other -- yes?
Yeah. Mr. Corey, is there -- has there been signage placed out at the landfill to help deter out-of-state, I mean, out-of-county trash coming in?
We're waiting for legislation to be fully done and over with before we have more robust signage than what we've had previously, which will say, "All loads subject to inspection, video surveillance in use," which we already have signs on the property like that elsewhere, because we do have that in use, like around our oil collection facility and stuff like that. But that's the plan. Once we get this done, then it's a, you know, a more visual notice. As soon as they come in the scales, "All loads are subject to inspection," as they always have been, but, you know, to kind of complement the legislation.
You think your regular customers now are getting the word that this is going to happen, and there's things that are cutting back, you're seeing less of this happening?
Anecdotally, I can tell you that there has been a significant decrease in traffic period. Now, of course, that's been since the 15th. It was about within 48 hours of the 15th work session that we were like, did we not get the memo? I mean, it was like crickets. Our usual line of trucks lined up 15 or 12 in the morning, they weren't there. It was four trucks. You know what I mean? And that trend has continued even up until today. Now, I did look at tonnage trends from July of 2024, July of 2025. I want to look at August with a full month of this, once we have something in place, because obviously, a half a month doesn't give you a good idea.
One other thing, while we're on the subject. I serve on the planning and zoning, and when we have a -- when we have something come up on planning and zoning, we have what they call a community impact statement. And I asked that it be added on to this community impact statement in the future of what kind, you know, if a big development comes in, like, at some point in time, I've been hearing they're going to tear down the Campbell Soup Building. Okay? If that happens, that's going to have an impact on the landfill. So I've asked that any development now, and that's something you might be getting calls about, even a large development is going to generate trash.
Residential trash.
What kind of impact that's going to have on our landfill.
Yeah.
So that's something you might want to be aware of.
Yes, sir. And like I say before, we do take into consideration the growth of the county. When we start to talk about, you know, any major expansion, obviously, where we stand right now with tier mapping, the rural parts of the county is a different story, but stuff that's going to be served by Water and Sewer and around Salisbury, for example, you want to take it into consideration with your long-term planning, for sure.
Also, planning and zoning, our planning and zoning department issues demolition permits. It might be something you want to keep an eye on in the future.
We see quite a bit of demo material.
Right.
Yep.
All right. So I do have one more concern. I just checked against the code. So Article 1 governs not just the landfill, but all unlawful disposal. And so what this has done, this legislative bill has done is it's put commercial haulers and other into the same section. And so just, I just want to point it out, and I have a recommendation, that the first offense not be a written warning. So, for example, the way that this interplays is 156-5 is the penalty section for all of Article 1. Within Article 1 of Chapter 156 is unlawful disposal. So it shall be unlawful for any person to throw, dump, or deposit, or cause or permit to be thrown, dumped, or deposited any litter, garbage, rubbish, or refuge on any public or private property other than property designated by the county or state for disposal. So what that targets, 156-3 targets is individuals who volunteer their time to collect the waste on the side of the road. So if the sheriff's department saw somebody throw, you know, can out the side of the road, they could pull them over, and they could only write them a warning for that, because what A1A has done is made it a warning for any violation of Article 1 of Chapter 156. So my recommendation would be so as not to make everybody's violation, because we know there's a lot of good citizens doing a lot of great work, that A1A read, "For a first offense, the person or commercial hauler shall be guilty of a civil infraction not more than $1,000." That way, we don't have to even worry about the escalation penalty. It allows what has always been the law, which is any violation of Chapter 156, Article 1, to be a $1,000 civil infraction, because otherwise, the effect of this amendment is that anyone who just does -- not at the landfill, but any unlawful disposal in the county, the worst they can get is a warning. Now, there are the transportation article for littering. There is the criminal statute we talked about for littering. But again, if it's a single -- even somebody who dumped a bunch of tires on the side of the road, they would only get a written warning if they were cited under 156-3 for unlawful disposal. So that's where all of this sort of interplays. When we try to target one thing, there are ramifications that play out throughout the rest of the article. So--
Isn't there state law that Trump set, though?
There's a criminal statute.
There's a criminal statute, but I'm just pointing it out.
It says, under penalty, under penalty, it says it specifically references Wycomico County Solid Waste Facility.
I understand. And but that's where the amendment that I drafted bifurcated and created a penalty provision for any violation of 156, Article 1, and then it had administrative penalties after it. What has been proposed tonight has deleted that, and now any violation of 156, Article 1, has this. So this is, I would believe, an unintended consequence. Otherwise, then, there is no penalty for a violation of 156-3.
I don't disagree with what Mr. Illuminati's saying, but I would hope that if somebody's throwing tires out on the side of the road, that they're not being issued a civil citation, but they're being issued a criminal citation under state law, because that's where the teeth is. And I don't -- I would assume that the county does not want to be prosecuting somebody for throwing a bag out a window for a civil citation, as opposed to having a criminal citation issued. But that's council's decision.
Were we to take the word "person" out and just leave it as "commercial hauler"?
And there's still not a penalty, because the -- it is completely gutted, 156-5A, which says it's a civil infraction subject to a fine. That currently governs everything. And now, when we're trying to put commercial haulers into the same category as everyone else, that's where the impasse is. So again, it's always been a violation. It's always been a civil infraction for any offense. And again, the department has discretion when to issue a warning. My office has discretion in when to prosecute and decide whether to go forward. And I'm recommending a $1,000 fine for a first offense. Not any escalation of penalty in that $2,250 range. It's a first offense. This will apply to anyone, whether it's at the landfill or whether it's on the side of the road.
With all due respect, I feel very comfortable with it, because it's very clear. It specifically says, it even goes as far as says, this is in the opinion of the Director of the Department of Public Works. And it goes even further by saying, "Disposal of out-of-county solid waste at a county -- at a Wycomico County solid waste facility."
Then there is not a penalty for any other violation -- there is not a civil infraction penalty for any other violation of Article 1 of Chapter 156. Mr. Benson agrees with me, as a legal principle. That's -- we can try to work it out later. I thought we had, through the work session, come up-- I thought we had through the work session come up with, so that we're not trying to on the fly make amendments.
A lot of the amendments that we proposed here, the same amendments we proposed probably a month ago. There's not much that has varied in here except for just maybe the amount of money or the amount of time. But it's always been basically three or four principles that we were, we were, we were trying to follow.
And I understand that. I believe it does accomplish that. I'm just explaining that there are, the application of the law has other consequences. We've seen this other times where when there's one tweak in one direction, there's pull in another direction. My legal recommendation, Mr. Benson's legal recommendation.
I'm not making that recommendation. I'm just simply agreeing that you're.
Well, how, how, how involved would Department of Public Works be? And I'll use the Shavox Road incident as an example, where we had illegal dumping. That was not even involving the Public Works Department. That involved planning and zoning and the sheriff's department. So how does this affect or don't affect that situation?
They cannot be issued a municipal citation for a violation of Chapter 156. They may be creating a nuisance in some other way. There may be a criminal law violation. I'm just expressing that in the scale of what one looks at, there is the individuals who are doing great work on the side of the road. And if that's observed, that either has to rise to a transportation article violation for throwing it outside of the road while operating a motor vehicle, or it has to be charged criminally. We've seen the process that's difficult with charging that criminally. This, the proposal I'm making is to just enforce the law that has always been there, which is that is a fine. If you don't feel $1,000 is appropriate for a first offense, you can cap it at 500. And when we still go to court, the court still gets to make the determination as to what's the appropriate fine. But we were here a couple of weeks ago talking about 15, $20,000 fines for the violators. And we know by state law, we're capped at a certain amount. But on this first offense, we're issuing a warning, whether it's at the landfill or whether it's on the side of the road.
From a, from a practical standpoint and taking Joe's example of somebody who is blatantly dumping, it seems to me that a criminal action would be more appropriate than, I'm not saying the $1,000 fine wouldn't be, you know, okay, but the criminal action would probably be the most appropriate. Conversely, if somebody does throw the can out the window, I really, how many times has anybody witnessed that? And how many times has anybody given, given a $1,000 fine or, or taken any action? So I mean, from a very practical standpoint, I also feel comfortable, I think, knowing that the criminal action can still be taken. And if it's very blatant, like Joe's talking about, then that would probably be the most appropriate.
The other thing we have is road signs around the county that says minimum fine $1,500 for dumping.
Those are.
Yep. You know, I mean, we need to get those straightened out, I guess.
Have they done any good?
No, it doesn't do any good.
I'm just pointing out that this is the illegal quandary I see from this amendment. I'm recommending legally just a fine for a first offense with a, as a civil infraction. You could set, if you're so, if there's a general concern about this, it could be $100. You have the power to set that fine up to $1,000. And it's just a matter of otherwise, an individual who does not litter at the landfill, there is no application of 156, Article 1 to them, so.
You know, you were just recommending a two-year probationary period. Are you saying now to eliminate the probationary period altogether?
I believe that it should still be a probationary period of two years because we're, we have to get into this escalating event or eliminate, no. And a first offense is this, a second offense?
So you're saying that your recommendation is an amendment to A, where it just says for a first offense, the person or commercial hauler shall receive a written warning placed on one year probationary period?
My recommendation would be that read for a first offense, the person or commercial hauler shall be guilty of a civil infraction punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000, $500, $100, whatever the council believes is appropriate, and be placed on a two-year probationary period. That would be my recommendation.
Right. Well, we've already amended the two-year probationary period. So the, an amendment to what what our two amendments have already passed would be to say, would be to have verbiage in there referencing a a $1,000 fine. Is that what you're saying?
A civil infraction punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000. And so then when, if and when we go to court on that infraction, the court would then determine and by law cannot impose more than $1,000.
And the court would. So we leave everything else alone. We leave everything else as is, but we simply add in there in addition to a civil infraction of not more than $1,000?
Strike a written warning with a, be guilty of a civil infraction punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000. Correct.
I guess I have a practical question, and that is how often has your department prosecuted a civil infraction for a violation of this section?
I don't know because I stopped prosecuting those a couple of years ago when I found somebody else to.
My guess is that it is never prosecuted.
While it's a theoretical problem, I think in actuality, I don't think there are civil citations being issued for minor littering offenses.
We can't get enforcement of pretty much anything these days.
That's the problem.
Across the board.
Well, what's the council feel? The verbiage again is that in addition to the one year, two-year probation, probationary period, that there would be in addition to a civil infraction, not more than $1,000.
I don't know that it'll help, but I don't guess it'll hurt to put it in.
All right. Somebody want to make a motion from the table?
I'll make a motion.
Joe, second?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I don't think council has originally voted on Mr. Ennis's motion when he read the full text. So I think the discussion are changes that are going to be made to that original motion.
No, he's, he's read it, and there's been a second in the discussion. An amendment is being recommended for that motion right now. So we're going to amend his, we're going to amend the motion that Dave has presented, and then we will present, we will vote on the amendment as amended.
As amended.
Right now, right now, we have an amendment on the table. Someone wants to amend that. And then when we vote for it, it will be the, the second amendment, Dave, that you've read here?
Yes.
As amended.
Okay. Just want to make it clear that we have.
It's not going to be not complicated, I think. So Joe's made that motion, correct? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so motion is second. Any further discussion on changing the specifics of it to, in a sense, what we're doing is adding a civil infraction of $1,000 in addition to the two years? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Amendment passes unanimously. Okay. Any other discussion?
Ask some more?
Well, we have to pass this amendment first. All right?
Correct. Yes.
I guess.
You're right.
So all those in favor of the, yes?
Just real quick, just, just from understanding, the all of the conversation, or all of the pieces where it says commercial hauler, hauler, I feel like it's a bit weird in the sense that we have, we're talking about things outside of the commercial hauler. We want to make this fit within 150, 156.5. I guess you still have all the language about a commercial hauler. I guess, does all that gel together?
It says any person or commercial hauler.
Okay.
So that's.
Yeah.
That's you, me, any other citizen?
Correct. And then, and then the rest of the, the rest of these A, B, C, D specifically spells out, okay?
Any person or commercial hauler throughout the entire process.
Just making sure of that. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So all those in favor of the amendment as read and amended twice? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Amendment as amended twice passes unanimously.
I move to add an Article 3 titled landfill, convenience center, recycling center, hours of operation, which shall include all sections after Section 156-13.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Amendment passes unanimously.
I move to amend Section 156-14 subsection A to read as follows. A, Wacomico County shall operate solid waste facilities in accordance with the Maryland Department of the Environment. Refuge disposal permit to include, but not necessarily limited to landfills, convenience centers, recycling centers, the locations and hours of operations for the solid waste facilities shall be set forth herein below. The days and hours of operation established in this section reflect the solid waste facility schedule in effect as of the introduction of legislation Bill 2025-11 on July 1, 2025. And to also amend subsections B and C to confer all bullet points to numerical numbers.
A second? Can you run with A, B, and C?
No, because they're, the original text of the legislative bill is not being changed. As he's, as Mr. Ennis stated, it's only converting, they're originally bullet points in the code. We don't put bullet points, we put.
Thank you, Mr. Illuminati.
1, 2, 3.
That's the motion is there, second? Joe, you have a second? Any further discussion? Yes.
I, I just want to acknowledge, I generally don't feel like this is an area that the legislative branch should be involved in. Now, I recognize that we've had some, been forced in certain ways, and then we've had things like the closing of convenience centers without our consent or acknowledgement. But in general, I think, you know, it, it starts to feel a little bit weird when you get into things like environmental refuge disposal permits and things that are technically approved by the executive branch, not by the legislative branch of government. So I guess I'm just acknowledging, I don't even know where the heck I'm going to vote on this, but I guess I'll say that it feels a bit weird in the sense that, you know, that it, it feels like we're treading into area that we probably shouldn't be treading into, trying to figure out the roles of government between the legislative and executive branch. I'm just acknowledging.
Any other questions, discussion? Seeing on all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion is carried. Amendment passes by a vote of five to one.
I move to delete in full the proposed Section 156-15 titled applicability to commercial haulers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Amendment passes unanimously.
I move to delete in full the proposed Section 156-16 titled tipping fee for out of county solid waste.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Amendment passes unanimously.
I move to delete in full the proposed Section 156-17 titled violations and penalties.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Amendment passes.
I move to amend the proposed Section 156-18 titled authority and amendments to be codified in, at Section 156-15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I'll just note that in this one, or in the same position as mentioned earlier, additionally, as I explained at the work session, council cannot amend the hours of operation, the solid waste facility list. It can amend the tipping fee schedule because the, those are set by the state permit. In the other section, it's just codifying what's in the current state permit. This is an executive branch function. I know that we disagree on that, but I just wanted to iterate for the record.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion is carried. Amendment passes by a vote of five to one. Is that everything we have? I believe so. As such. As such, all those in favor of legislative bill number 2025-11 as amended numerous times, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's do a roll call, sorry. Councilman Hawley?
Aye.
Hastings?
Aye.
Shields? Manis?
Aye.
Merritt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Legislative bill number 2025-11 as amended passes unanimously as an emergency act. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Ms. Hurley, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Next on the agenda this evening is the veto of legislative bill number 2025-09, an act to amend Chapter 9 titled Vehicles County and charter provision for council reconsideration, which is Section 411D. Legislative bill 2025-09 is an act to amend Chapter 99 of the Wacomico County Code titled Vehicles County to require decals to be permanently affixed to the exterior of both front doors of county vehicles in a uniform manner and to exempt the circuit court for Wacomico County from Section 99-3E that employees use a county vehicle for official business if available or not receive mileage allowance. The intent of this legislation is to clarify a couple provisions that were in, in the original legislative bill establishing the procedures for the use in county, the use and, use and operation of county-owned and leased vehicles, which was approved by the council by legislative bill 2024-12 on December the 17th, 2024, which was also vetoed by the county executive. Legislative bill 2025-09 was introduced on June the 17th, 2025. Council then held a, I'm sorry, June the, yeah, June 17th, 2025. Council then held a public hearing and adopted the bill on July the 15th, 2025. The count, the legislation was then presented to the county executive on July the 16th, for which she has 21 days to return the bill to the county council for her approval or veto. The bill is returned to the council office on August the 1st with the executive's veto. That is in the briefbook per Charter Section 411D. Quote, "Upon veto, the county executive shall provide in writing a statement for the reasons for the veto. The veto message shall be entered in the journal of the county council and not later than at its next legislative day, the county council may reconsider the bill. If upon reconsideration, at least five members of the county council vote in the affirmative, the bill shall be law." End quote. Mr. President, with your permission, I'll go ahead and enter the veto message in the minutes.
Please.
And a copy of the bill as adopted on July the 15th is also in your briefing material.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to reconsider legislative bill number 2025-09. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We don't need a roll call, do we?
For the reconsideration.
Legislative bill number 2025-09 has been put back on the table for reconsideration. Entertained a motion to approve legislative bill 2025-09 as originally adopted. Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, we'll do a roll call. Those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Councilman Hawley?
Aye.
Councilman Hastings? Councilman Shields? Councilman Ennis?
Aye.
Vice President Merritt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative bill number 2025-09 passes unanimously.
Okay, next on the agenda this evening is resolution number 105-2025. This is approving a utility easement agreement with, with the Marva Power and Light Company for the land which abuts 31489 Mount Herman Road, Salisbury, on behalf of the Wacomico County Airport.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 105-2025. I move, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is the submission of appointments to the Ethics Commission, Lower Shore Workforce Alliance, Board of Library Trustees, and Board of Appeals, as well as a reappointment to the Board of Library Trustees. And this is going to be by Mr. Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration, and Mr. Steve Lakin, Assistant Director of Administration.
John?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration.
Steve Lakin, Assistant Director of Administration.
So I'm going to have Steve do some of these. I'm going to start with the, you know, just in case, just in case, you know, I fall ill one day or something like that.
Dave just read off nine amendments in a row here, you know? Nobody had enough. Glad to have you here.
Glad to be here.
Thanks.
So I'm going to start with the submission of the Wacomico County Ethics Commission. Get my stuff right. Mrs. Morris is already alternate member of that commission. So we're proposing, and we're submitting her forward to serve as a full member of the Ethics Commission. And of course, their purpose is to promote the public trust and confidence in local government and to ensure government and to ensure the honesty and impartiality of county employees as well as elected officials and execution of their duty. So I'm formally submitting the name of Sharon Morris to serve as a member of the Waukesha County Ethics Commission.
Mr. Levin, would you want to submit all five? One, two, three? Yeah, would you want to submit all five right now?
If that's what you would like.
Yeah, you could submit all five and then we'll do the resolutions for those five. And then Mr. Lakin could submit the rest of them. And then we would, because there are, yeah, there's, no, there's just one more submission. I'm going to leave it up to you. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 106-2025. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
The county executive recommends the appointment of Rachel Bomar as member of the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance Board. The primary purpose of the board is to provide policy and oversight for the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funds awarded to the lower shore of the lower, local workforce development area. Alliance Workforce Director Leslie Porter Cabell is in attendance and available to answer any questions, if you have any.
Entertained a motion from council. Okay?
I was going to say usually we literally use the word submission, so formally.
Formally.
Submission. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, I missed that. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 107-2025. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
The county executive recommends the appointment of Eva Paxton to the Waukesha County Library Board of Trustees. The board sets policies and procedural guidelines for the library and oversees proposed and approved budget operations. Library Director Mr. Seth Hirschberger is in attendance. If you have any questions, the county executive formally submits Eva Paxton for your confirmation.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 108-2025. Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
County executive recommends the appointment of Michelle M. Schlehofer to the Waukesha County Library Board of Trustees. The board sets policies and procedural guidelines for the library and oversees proposed and approved budget operations. Again, Mr. Seth Hirschberger is available to answer any questions, if you have any. And the county executive formally submits Michelle Schlehofer for your consideration.
Thank you. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 109-2025. I move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
County executive recommends the appointment of Lauren White to the Waukesha County Board of Appeals. The board reviews applications for special exemptions and variances from the zoning board code based on information presented by the applicant and supplemental data provided by staff members. Director of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development Tracy Taylor is in attendance and available to answer any questions. County executive formally submits the name of Lauren White for your consideration.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 110-2025. I move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is the submission of Timothy J. Chrysler as Deputy Director of Emergency Services.
County executive recommends the appointment of Mr. Timothy J. Chrysler as Deputy Director of the Department of Emergency Services. The Department of Human Resources conducted a regional recruitment that included candidates from throughout the state and across state lines. They conducted six in-person and remote interviews and deemed Mr. Chrysler to be the best candidate.
Mr. Lakin, we appreciate that. Mr. Lufman, thank you very much, John. Yes?
Yeah, and he will be here, obviously, tonight for further discussions.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
The next item for business is resolution number 111-2025. This is approving a zoning waiver for the city of Salisbury, Pohanka Annexation Pine Way, Pohanka Kia Annexation in the city of Salisbury.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 111-2025. I move. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Good evening, Ms. Taylor, how are you?
Good evening, how are you?
Good. Are these dealerships now serviced with water and sewer from Salisbury?
I don't believe so. They have their onsite septic.
Okay, will they, will that, the annexation, will that, will the city start serving them now or run water and sewer to them or?
So yes, as a part of the annexation, and I should start, I'm Tracy Taylor, Waukesha County Planning Director. As a part of this annexation, that's part of the purpose of the annexation, and that's why we have the two for the, you know, Kia, Pohanka Kia property. They're proposing to rehab the existing building and then build a new building. And as a result of that, they will need public sewer. So we have alerted the city as a part of our review that they need to do a comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment because currently they're not planning for sewer.
Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 111-2025 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 112-2025. This is approving a zoning waiver for the city of Salisbury, Pohanka Annexation Chestnut Way, Pohanka Kia Annexation in the city of Salisbury.
Entertained a motion from council for resolution 112-2025. I move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I've got another question for Tracy.
Sure.
How, due to the fact that the city's going to start serving these two dealerships, where they're at, that those two, that neighborhood behind those is in dire need of water and sewer, we know that because of the lot sizes, is it going to be in collaboration with the county as far as trying to work those neighborhoods into being served at the same time as this is being done?
So one of the things that I'm working on with Adam Corey and the Executive's Office is we are doing a comprehensive review and update of the Waukesha County Water and Sewerage Plan. And one of the things that we're doing as a part of that is identifying, identifying all the areas that have failing septic for potential service down the road. So yes, we are currently doing that in conjunction with, I've mentioned this before, working on the PFA. As you know, we have a very large PFA comment area. So we're doing the analysis and planning and zoning because if we need state funds for some of the extension of sewer for some of these neighborhoods, we'll need to make sure that they're PFA. I would tell you.
Priority funding area.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Just to make sure everyone's, priority funding area.
I apologize, priority funding area, that's where the state focuses, their growth-related funds. And you do have to be a PFA. And I would venture to say that 75% of our existing PFA comment area, which the comment area is where we certified it as a PFA, but the state did not concur, so they place a comment on it, so it's not fully eligible for funding. I would say 75% of our comment area is really due to our comprehensive water and sewer plan not being updated and not showing future service areas. You don't, you don't have to be an S1 category, like existing service or S2 planned within two years. You can be as far out as a sewer five, S5, planned within a 10-year timeframe and still qualify for PFA. So that's something that we're actively working on and identifying those neighborhoods. In our water and sewer work group, we meet every other Monday. We look at the various neighborhoods and then we do the PFA analysis and report back. It's a process and it's going to probably take a good portion of a year or longer to get all of this completed.
It just seems like this is the opportune time to take advantage of the situation with that neighborhood right there behind it.
I certainly can talk to the water and sewer group and make that area, I think you're talking like Cherry Way, Long Way, all of that, yes.
You know.
We can certainly look into that. And just, I don't want to belabor the issue, but just so that you understand, on these annexation reviews that we're now bringing to you for your consideration, the state annexation law clearly says that if the uses are not, or if the uses in the existing zoning, the county zoning versus the municipal zoning, are substantially different, or if the residential density from county to city is a 50% or greater increase, it needs a waiver. So it has to come to you for a waiver for you to grant because absent the waiver, then they cannot apply the municipal zoning and develop it under municipal zoning for five years. You may have heard of the five-year rule. That's what the five-year rule is. So oftentimes, you're going to be seeing us come on a regular basis with these because it's not an or, it's an and. So most cases, the residential density allowed in the municipal zoning is going to be a greater than 50% increase than the county. So I just wanted to kind of get you used to these sorts of memos and the fact that when we send you this for the waiver, we will also address PFA and we will also address tier map. And in these cases, when we revise the county tier map, we'll remove these properties because these properties will then transfer to the municipal tier map. They won't be under our control.
Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 112-2025 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Next for your considerations, resolution number 113-2025. This is to authorize the law firm of Baron and Bud, PC, Causich, Sumich, Persola, and Taylor LLC, and McLeod Law Group LLC to provide legal services in connection with pursuing claims of Waukesha County relating to the manufacturing of firefighting foam products and/or other products containing parafloreskill substances.
I've practiced it a few times. But I didn't have that one.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 113-2025 as read. Second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor of resolution 113-2025 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
This is resolution number 114-2025. This is setting the regular monthly meeting date and time of the Waukesha County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 114-2025. I move. Second? Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'll acknowledge once again, it just feels a bit weird with us getting into the legislating, or at least us discussing when a meeting should be held. But that being said, I'll still vote for it and appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of resolution 114-2025 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hurley. The time we have on the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county residence, and your concern.
Mike Goldberg, Waukesha County. On June 30, the county executive declared a landfill crisis on the premise that existing Cell Eight would be filled before Cell Seven was built. She stated that we could have a work session in the middle of July. That work session was held on July 15. However, the executive didn't show up because she was taking a White House tour that day, not out, not out on county business. She claimed that she was back in the office by 1:30 in time for the work session. Well, that two-hour work session ended at 1:50 and she never appeared. She claimed that the director and deputy directors of administration were at the work session. This was a lie. The executive's absence in the face of a crisis was a dereliction of duty. The administration claimed that the crisis was identified back in March, yet neither the council nor the public were advised until June. In early June, the executive staff informed the commercial trash haulers of an impending crisis, but didn't advise the council until weeks later. Her response, until there's a crisis, there's really no need to communicate. At the haulers' meetings, she presented the plan for phased closure of the landfill beginning August 2nd, a plan that makes absolutely no sense because what isn't dumped today would be dumped tomorrow. In response, the council drafted emergency legislation to ensure that the landfill would remain open and that out-of-county trash would not be accepted, something that has been occurring since she took office. Well, the landfill didn't close this past Saturday, but the executive failed to advise the haulers or post this information on the county website. She didn't even advise the council that it would remain open until just one day before the scheduled closing. Why was this information withheld? Why were the haulers not immediately advised so they could develop contingency plans? Is this another one of her infamous bait and switches, never intending to close the landfill? Why didn't the executive simply work with the council to find solutions? Why did she fail to implement the Cell Seven design plan that was submitted to the county right before she took office? Why was the landfill out of compliance with regulations? Why over the past month have we been told that the construction drawings for Cell Seven were 75% complete, then 90%, and most recently, just 60%? Why did the administration assert that accepting out-of-county trash violated the landfill permit, but has produced no evidence of this? Why did the comprehensive landfill plan make no mention of an impending crisis? Was the data collected by the administration upon which the engineer relied flawed? And why are the very employees and consultants who were managing the landfill and failed to act, comply with regulations, or maintain reliable data still employed? The crisis we face is one of credibility and competence. The executive claims that she doesn't attend council meetings because she doesn't believe she should be criticized and that her mental health doesn't need it. She's obviously not a fan of free political speech. Well, ma'am, being the subject of well-earned criticism goes with the territory. If you're not sufficiently mentally healthy to deal with it, then it's time to find another line of work. Thank you.
Goldberg?
Good evening, Robert Taylor, County Resident. I want to commend the council on acting with dispatch with regard to the situation at the landfill. This came up in a very unusual way. The public and the council was not aware of it until roughly 60, 70 days ago. And you've moved quickly. I understand we're still in the process of working things out. It's a little bit like watching Sausage Made, and I did do that in college. I took the seminar in Slaughterhouse. We called it Blood and Guts, so I've seen it done. And in any event, I give you a lot of credit for doing that. As far as the trash that's deposited outside of the landfill, I think Mr. Benson mentioned there is state legislation on that. So it wouldn't really matter, I don't think, greatly what you all do because you've got state legislation. It may not cover somebody throwing a cup out of a window, but certainly somebody dumping tires off the side of the road, it would. And my understanding, I've seen pictures, there was, I think, a month or so ago, somebody found some trash out on the east side. What's happened there? Has that been taken care of? Just, you know, kind of a rhetorical question. So that's about all I have to say. Oh, I did one thing. Since the executive closed the recycling at the Civic Center, I've been using Walnut Tree Road, the station there. And I noticed the first time, about a week ago, I go there maybe two, three times a month, the first time about a week ago, I noticed dump trucks coming in. Now, I go there, like I say, two, three times. I don't, I don't count the trucks, but I watch them because I want to make sure they're not pulling into where the recycling area is when I'm taking stuff out and putting it in because I don't want to get hit by a truck. And it's the first time that I can remember ever seeing dump trucks go in there. Now, maybe I've missed it the other times, but I'm wondering if some of what normally went into the landfill might now being diverted to those centers like at Walnut Tree Road. Just a thought, might want to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And the public comments.
Good evening, council. My name is Monica Brooks and I am president of Waukesha County NAACP. Ran over here from National Night Out, which is going very well, by the way. Just had a couple things, I, which I can ask this question, I can get the answer to this later, but seeing the thing about the planning and zoning meeting approval, I didn't know if that came from the planning and zoning or if that came from here. And if it came from here, I think that is kind of weird. So that's just a comment. But I did want to speak to the appointments. Once upon a time, I was here talking about our lack of diversity in certain positions and appointments and that when there were new positions being up for grabs, that it was not promoted, it was not highly spread.[1697.54] was not promoted, it was not highly spread. So that information began to be shared so that more people can know about it, but we are still not in a place where that diversity is being actually seen through the appointments. And while I did hear the gentleman talking about the landfill, no, not the landfill, when Bunky was up here and they talked about the director position, whichever director position it was, and how, oh, fire, how they went far and wide to make sure that they sought the best candidates. I would encourage our county council to also encourage our county executive and those to ensure that they are doing the same when they're looking to find people and representation in these different spaces. Because it still has a nice homogeneous look. Although, kudos for getting the young lady who was 22. I was like, here, here, we need diversity in our youth as well, our younger adults to be represented in these positions. And I'm also not taking away for anyone's qualifications for those who were appointed. I have nothing against any of them. I'm very happy when people are willing to serve. But I do recognize that it is also all of our responsibility to ensure that everyone has a fair representation at this, at the table. Let me see. The last thing I will bring up is in regards to the different, it may be, for those of us who are still learning more about how these annexations happen and who gets to do what and all of that sort of thing. And Councilman Holloway was asking about the neighborhood behind Polhanka's access. I'm wondering how that comes about, kind of maybe there needs to be a deeper discussion about that so that the public really understands, because there are a lot of areas that are being annexed, and there are communities around them as well that are in need. And how is that being determined? How is it, so how do people know? Because what hap, what people see is that, oh, hey, how come they get it? Because this group is doing it, and how come we don't? So just encourage you to think about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Good Citizen, and I'm Wycomico County resident. I've never, I'm not as articulate as people ahead of me. I came tonight because, not because of landfill issues and so forth, because I believe that the biggest threat to our freedoms and our liberties is our local governments. The other day, on Eastern Shore undercover, our county executive, which I was hoping to be here tonight to, to confront her, came out with a new rule about the ethics commission that in order to file a complaint with the ethics commission, you have to give up your full name and full address. My understanding is the Fourth Amendment protects against, gives you the right to your person's places and things, to be secure in that. Your First Amendment gives you the right to petition your government, and during the petitioning of your government, it gives you insurances to be free from any kind of punishment from your government. Simply the fact that we have to give our name and address is, to me, a threat to the person, personal liabilities or personal persons of the county. I wasn't very happy about it. Again, I'm not very articulate about this stuff, the first time I've ever come up. Civics 101, the government does not grant any rights. The government has, has no rights to grant any, anything. In a government of the people, by the, in a government of the people, by the people, the government has privileges granted to them by the people. All of you on the council are all appointed and elected by the council. We, the people, give you the privilege of working for us. I see in today's world what's going on, the federal government is the last of my worries. When I see the county executive making statements that clearly, obviously there's an issue, maybe there's too many people complaining about the same issue, X, Y, Z, but to, in my opinion, that's a blatant violation of my First and Fourth Amendment. And to me, I'm neither a Democrat, Republican, or any of that, I'm a constitutionalist. At the end of the day, that's what's going to save this country. And we have to be very, very careful to not stamp, to not trample on the document that allows us to be who we are in this country. So that's why I came to present. Thank you very much.
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. I'd like to speak about the vehicle legislation for three minutes. On November 21st, 2023, there was an open work session with the county executive. During that work session, the executive stated to the council that the legislation was not in the council's scope. She also stated that she did not have a problem with a seal on every car. And then she followed that up by stating, I have no problem making sure the original seal is on all the cars. Executive then stated that she has to clean 10 miles every day for personal use and has to turn intermileage every two weeks. November the 19th of 2024, legislative bill 2024-12 is introduced to establish procedures for the use and operation of county-owned or leased vehicles. Section 99.1 defines a decal as a 10-inch decal permanently affixed to a vehicle. 99.2, section C, says that a decal shall be placed on each side of the vehicle. A decal shall also be affixed to the rear of the vehicle when space allows, such as on the tailgate of trucks and SUVs. Session D, an employee that intentionally and knowingly operates a vehicle without the decal affixed to their vehicle shall have their vehicle driving privilege suspended. 99.4, section D, vehicles to be used for official business only. Use of a vehicle for personal business is prohibited. Examples are transporting members of the family, transporting children to and from school. Section I, all departments, including the county executive's office, are required to maintain daily travel logs and must be available for audit for a minimum of three years. This legislation was adopted on December 17th of 2024. It was vetoed on December 24th by the executive. The veto was overridden on January the 9th of 2025, and legislative bill 2024-12 went into effect March 10th of 2025. March the 18th, 2025, Ms. Hurley emailed Mr. Lufman concerning all county vehicles were not in compliance with decals. The following day, March 19th, Mr. Lufman replied, only one vehicle without decals and they were on order. The following day, March 20th, 2025, Mr. Lufman notified Ms. Hurley that all decals had come in. As of August the 2nd, 2025, the county executive's vehicle still does not have permanent decals on it and is out of compliance, which means that it should not be available, be driven, should not have been available since March 20th. The other day, during an interview, I accused the council of being complacent by not holding the executive accountable for her actions. In reality, poorly written legislation without proper penalties may be the cause for the inaction of the council. Legislation is written with the belief that all parties will adhere to the rules set forth. However, has been apparent for the past two and a half years, the executive believes she is above adhering to things which she does not agree with. The council needs to write in that legislation that spells out the results of failure to comply. The council also needs to use the power and the position of the independent auditor to follow up on complaints by the citizens of this county when they are witness to improper actions, which in some instances may be not only a violation of legislation, but also possibly a violation of law.
Right.
Okay. Since the direct administration's own words from March 20th, 25, that decals were received, we are left with only one possibility for why there are no decals on the executive's car. She is in direct disobedience of legislative bill 2024-12.
Any other public comments? That concludes public comments. Council comments?
I have something. Okay. You go ahead.
Ladies first.
I just wanted to say that, good news, good news, good news. Channel 47 always talk about good news. We had a meeting last evening at the Park and Rex concerning my ghost playground, the Indian Village Playground. We received funding through state legislator and the Board of Public Works to upgrade the playground with new equipment, picnic benches, et cetera, et cetera, barbecue grills, a couple of them, a new pavilion. And there was two designs looked at on what we wanted, and there's going to be a survey on picking out the design that people would want, and they may can take parts of one and add it to the other. On Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00, they're going to have an activity, a closing out activity at the playground. And I'll, I'll be there, and anybody else want to volunteer to see what the children like. I like to see exactly what the children who will be using the equipment, which is geared toward five to 12-year-olds. So that's good news for me and the neighborhood. And it's, we're going to have walking trails and things of that sort. And I'm happy to see that. It makes me feel that the Department of Rex is listening to people because we do need things like that and programs for our children, especially in the summer, when people can't afford to send the kids to camp and everything. That's all I have to say.
Ken.
To Mr. Taylor's comment about the issue on the east side, I want to thank Mrs. Taylor, no relation, and from planning and zoning and her staff and the sheriff's department. There were tons of trash dumped on a piece of property on Shavox Road over the period of about a month, and the planning and zoning code enforcement and sheriff's department has been working on that. And hopefully, there'll be criminal charges filed against the person that did that. We're really hoping that's going to happen. So on the vehicle legislation, all I wanted was stickers on the doors of cars, and it's been two years. I think I had a, well, I don't think, sometimes I don't think, but I had a citizen send a video. I was wondering if Mrs. Hurley could pull this up. It kind of goes back to what Mr.
The agenda is propose legislation to establish procedures for use.
What Mr. Atkins said tonight.
You play it now.
Yeah, if you would, please.
Operation of county-owned or leased vehicles, list of complaints and concerns from citizens asking what can be done about.
That's our county executive's vehicle. Now, no matter where, where you're at politically, that sign came out of that truck. That's an $80,000 taxpayer-funded vehicle that the taxpayers paid for, but it's being used for political purposes. Should never happen. And that's, that's good. Thank you. In November 23, the county executive said there's no problem putting decals. We got emails saying decals were in, they're still not on the vehicle. As of today, they weren't on the vehicle. I don't have, I don't know how a leader of a county expects their employees to follow the law when they don't follow the law themselves.
How does she expect the citizens to follow the law?
Excuse me, sir. Yeah.
Joe, one second, though. I don't know if you were talking about the video, but I don't know if that video ever went out on the public screen. The public's not aware of what you're talking about.
Can you finish playing?
Yeah, I guess play the video. Yeah. Sorry.
Sometimes misuse, sometimes people not understanding. Now, you know, the main purpose of this is a lot of folks don't know if it's county car. Main things is that all the county vehicles have a seal on them. Is that a problem with you guys?
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, if you think that every car needs to have a seal, I have no problem making sure that the new seal is on all, I mean, not the new seal, that the original seal is on all the cars. I mean, that's fine. We have to claim whether it's business or personal travel. We pay for that. So it's a fringe benefit, like for me, for example. When I drive to work every single day in that Tahoe, it's personal. It's 10 miles I have to claim that comes on my. Also, though, I really wish that the first time we were hearing about this wasn't right now.
So it's almost two years later, and there's still no stickers on the car. Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Any other council comments?
Now that we have the landfill legislation completed, and I think we came to a pretty good spot, and as Mr. Taylor mentioned, it's like making sausage, but I think we came to a fairly good compromise, and I'm happy with that. And it sounds like the results are already coming forth. It sounds like the tonages are already being, lowering and coming into control. But I don't want to leave it without thinking about cell number seven. That's still a very critical issue, and we've got a short timeline. And I wanted to remind everybody that Mr. Corey said it was going to be, I think, not, they were within, within a short time, A&E was within a short period of time to get 90% of the design done, and then it would be not until December before they would have 100%. So just thinking about that timeline, and then the construction has to begin. And I'm, I'm a contractor, and I'm, I'm thinking about, is there any way that we can expedite this? And perhaps where I'm headed is get Mr. Corey to come back and just give us an update as to how we're doing as far as that goes, because that's still a very critical issue, no matter whether we have the slowdown of the out-of-county tonnage. And just some thoughts from a contractor perspective, not trying to get into the exec's area, but is, can, can A&E go any faster with that design? Most of these cells, I assume, are pretty, pretty much the same, like cookie cutter. Is there any possibility that they can, you know, reduce the amount of time to get that full design out before it goes to bid? And/or can they put it out to bid at 90% design? My company has bid on projects that were 60% design for NASA and et cetera. So, and I, I don't know what the ground rules are as far as that goes, but whatever we can do, whatever that department can do to expedite that, to make sure that we're not going to be sitting here a year from now, you know, wishing that we had expedited and that we're, that we, we truly are in a crisis. So just want to mention that, that's, you know, we've, we've got the legislation put to bed, but there's some other important topics, and cell seven is, is it?
Go ahead.
I'll just go quick, since we're, first of all, thank you, everyone, for coming in, for tuning in. Since we're talking trash, I figure I'll join in. And in the last two, well, last 48 hours, less than that, I've, I've had three different constituent issues that have popped up, but one of them's more dumping of trash in my district. Another one is an individual was likely burning trash, and all the neighbors are breathing that in. And then there's another situation. But I just want to acknowledge, we are, we are drowning as a society in plastic trash. Plastic is not recyclable, even despite what you've heard or been told. It is generally not. Only 4% of it is actually being recycled, so it's effectively not recyclable, but it's ubiquitous. We do need to look at other options when it comes to this. You know, 40% of what goes into a landfill is biodegradable. We do need to look at anaerobic digestion or other kind of options where we can, you know, start to cut down on that waste because I, I think, as it's been mentioned, you know, we're running out of cell space quite quickly, and there's, there's really nowhere else in the county where we're going to be setting up a new landfill. And when that landfill's done, I mean, what, what are we going to do? And, you know, I remember County Executive Culver tried to put it out on Norris Twilly Road in San Domingo when we lived out there. You know, like, there's really no good space in Wycomico County where we could start a new landfill. And so when that's gone, it's gone. So I know there's, none of us here are plastic manufacturers, but I at least want to acknowledge that publicly. This is a external problem that is causing an internal issue. You know, it, we need Congress to, to actually address and to stop with the petrochemical plastic. You can make biodegradable plastic. It's only a fraction of a cent less expensive than, than petrochemical plastic, but you can make biodegradable plastics. That's where we need to go. But that's not what happened, that's not what's happening. And meanwhile, we're just choking on it. So it needs to be addressed.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out as well. It's always good to have people come out and to tune in. I figure I might as well talk about trash, too. Why not? I think it's important to note that the whole reason this landfill legislation came about was because on June 10th, at a haulers' meeting, a plan was disclosed to shut the landfill down to commercial haulers, beginning, beginning August 2nd, with the first step, October 1st being the second step, another step in February, and the ultimate potential closure, July 1st, 2026, to commercial haulers. Well, last year, I believe, we processed 166,000 tons of trash in our landfill. If we close the landfill to commercial haulers, where's that trash going to go? Somerset County has made a formal announcement, as long, as well as Worcester County, they are not accepting out-of-county trash. So where is it going to go? I'm glad we worked through this. As Councilman Ennis said, I think we're in the right direction, we're in a good spot, but we need to not take the foot off the pedal and aggressively go after cell seven and get that online as soon as possible. This week, I commend the youth group that went out along the train tracks between Main Street and Fruitland and Main Street and Salisbury, and I lost count of how many bags of trash they cleaned up as part of Wycomico Clean, the city, and the county solid waste department all banded together this week and did a mass cleanup effort. There were sofas, tires, you name it. So shout out to those, those folks. I was asked this week- this week, do you think we're going to be able to solve the landfill problem? And I said, yes, if we can get clear, accurate, consistent messaging and communication. We're being told it costs $88 a ton to process trash, and we're also being told it costs $84. Which is it? Are the construction documents 60%, 70%, or 90% complete? Which is it? We, we need to get to a, a point where we have factual, accurate, complete information. Councilman Ennis and myself went out with Mr. Corey, and I want to thank Mr. Corey. We did a landfill tour. We spent two and a half hours out there. And I did this two and a half years ago, but I wanted to go again because things have changed. And shout out to Mr. Corey. He's, he's got his eye on the ball out there. And we, we learned a lot, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
It was, it was good. I encourage everybody, whether you're elected official, ordinary citizen, contact Mr. Corey. He's, he's happy to take you out there and show you how it works, why they do what they do, how they do what they do. And with the vehicle legislation, it only makes sense to have your county vehicles marked. This has been a lot of discussion, a lot of legal fees spent. Just put the decal on your car. If it were up to me, I'd have you put the department that the vehicle is assigned to under the decal for accountability reasons. Those vehicles belong to the taxpayers. They don't belong to the people that drive them. So, my opinion. Thank you very much.
Under President of Comments, I would also like to thank Mr. Benson, Mrs. Hurley and staff, and the other council members for helping to put this landfill issue to bed. We were in a very precarious situation where decisions were being made, unilateral decisions were being made, to threaten to close a landfill. And I just, I just don't think you can possibly go take those type of measures, push yourself in that type of a position to unanimously make that type of a, a, a ruling without any type of input whatsoever from a governing body, which is this county council, or the public as a whole. So, I'm glad to see that we've passed the legislation, because that means any other, any other ideas or considerations that this may happen again. It's been suggested that this will be on the back burner for now. But no, this, this is no longer on the burner at all. The county council will have to make any type of decisions if we feel it's necessary to make any closures or change any times. I think that's a really good thing. It was also suggested that this will take effect in 60 days, but that is also not true. This was emergency legislation, which means it will take effect tomorrow if the executive signs it tomorrow. Hopefully, we don't see another veto of another legislative bill to send us into additional turmoil and expense. So, I'm looking forward to that. I think we've done an excellent job. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for that process, and the members of the public who have also had their input. And that being said, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the local government article, section 3-305B1, to discuss a personnel matter pertaining to the appointment of a deputy director of emergency services to protect the privacy of the individual. As a motion second, motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Legislative meeting is adjourned. The first item on the open work session is Wycomico County 2024 Annual Report. And we have one, one more time. We have Mrs. Taylor here.
Hi. Tracy Taylor, Wycomico County Planning Director. State law requires that every year, the county file an annual report, the Department of Planning and Zoning, to sort of highlight the development activities that have occurred within the year. Keep in mind that it's based off calendar year. So, we're required to have it done prior to July 1 of the following year. So, this is for calendar year, January 1 through December 31, 2024. We did have this to the Maryland Department of Planning, which is the agency that we're to submit it to. We did have it to them before July 1. The Planning Commission is required to review and approve the annual report, and then we're required to file it or submit it to the elected officials. So, a formal approval is not required by the county council, but we are required to file it with you. I think, out of respect to your time and the hour, and your meeting's not over yet, if you don't mind, I'll go over some of the highlights of the annual report, and then if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them. One really important thing to highlight is that we had to do the long form, which is a good thing. It's more work for us, but it's a good thing for the county, because that means that we issued more than 50 residential building permits this year. In fact, we issued 92 total, which is over double of what we had in the previous calendar year. So, I think that's really encouraging. I should also mention that although I'm presenting this report, this was a team effort in my department. We had at least a half a dozen people that worked on compiling this data. So, I don't want to slight them in any way. I think it's important to mention their efforts. We are required, in addition, another important point to make. I talked about priority funding areas or PFAs earlier, and I talked about us having a large comment area. Don't be too concerned on page two and the chart at the top when we list the total number of residential building permits. And that looks to be something that would be a negative, the 85 are in a non-PFA, because someone looking at that would think that implies sprawl. But keep in mind, this is just PFA, non-PFA, which means if it's in a comment area, it can still be in the non-PFA. And like I said, we're working on that. So, the non-PFA area is probably the majority that's within a comment area that we're already working on rectifying that problem.
I assume that when it's in a PFA, a priority funding area, that there's possibly, that there is funding that's being, that's coming, I guess, from the state of Maryland to, not that it really matters. I was just curious. Does that imply that, that, that the funding has been requested?
So, when the PFA law was passed, and the county had the option to designate PFA, there were certain criteria that they had to utilize. And unfortunately, when, when the counties were designated, when the PFAs in the county were designated, the state did not concur that it met all the criteria. The single greatest point of contention is planned for sewer. That's one of the big things. So, even though the state does not have the ability to not recognize a county-designated PFA, the only comment that, or the only ability they have is to place a comment on it. So, what that means is, if it's still eligible for funding, we just have to go through an additional process since the comment is on top of it. What my goal is, as director, is to remove the comments. And I think that will, we've already done a lot of that already. We've already addressed the schools. We have addressed some of the areas with the Salisbury Donut Holes Water Sewer Plan Amendment that you saw a few months ago. And slowly but surely, we'll be removing a lot of these as we start to update the comprehensive water and sewer plan. So, that is the goal. I think, I, I hope you'll see a much different report in the future. And we'll be coming to you with some of that information as we move along on that project. And I hope that answered your question. We did not adopt any new comp plan elements. We did do some legislation in 2024 cannabis legislation, and then, you know, we did the emergency legislation for the medical clinics. With respect to growth-related changes, we highlighted on page three, we highlighted a couple of the annexations in Salisbury, one in Fruitland. They were filed with the Department of Legislative Services. And moving along on page four, to describe any end of planning improvements in 2024, we began our update of our county critical ordinance, which is almost finished and should be to you within a couple of months' time. We continue to work on efforts to streamline the development review and permitting process, and I think most of you saw that with the Title Health Medical Clinic. We moved that rather quickly through the process, and we have filled all but one of our vacant planner positions. So, I'm very pleased to announce that. All of our Planning Commission members have not taken the Planning Commissioner's training course, and we are working on getting that done. And as we move into the commission split with our new members of the Planning Commission, it'll be an opportune time for us to do that, and they can take that course online in their homes. So, that, that's a definite advantage. In section three on development capacity analysis, the reason why we stated no on that is because the state of Maryland Department of Planning used to do this service for jurisdictions. They don't do that any longer because of their staffing issues, and their model has not been updated. So, we will be including a new development capacity analysis in the process of updating our comprehensive plan. You all were generous enough to fund that effort, and we are preparing that RFP now to get that out for bid. And as a part of the comp plan update, we will do what's referred to as the DCA, which basically shows us what our potential is for development in the county. So, that's why that section is not filled in. If you go to page six, again, don't be too concerned over all the zeros in the chart, because if you look, this is for locally funded ag preservation programs. Ours is not locally funded. We are not a certified county anymore due to our zoning. They think that we don't have a restrictive enough agricultural zoning. That's something that the planning department is actively working on to try to get our recertification back for the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation or the MOUTH program. We currently, because we're not certified, we get to keep 1/3 of the state ag land transfer tax. Yes.
How, how can the state criticize us as far as ag, not having enough ag land? Okay, when they come along and take the responsibility from the planning, the county and planning and zoning for putting in solar?
I agree.
I mean, it seems like they're, you know, contradicting theirself there. Okay, you don't have enough ag. You're not making it important enough. But yet, they come along and take, because that's what, I think that's what you all were trying to do, is protect ag land, right?
Mm-hmm.
With the plant, with the solar. So, how can they do that?
Yes. Coming from my previous time at the state and my local time here, and I saw this even when I worked for the state, because I work with local government, there's a lot of conflicting regulations at the state level of what they want us to do and don't want us to do. This item actually is on the county executive's agenda, and Planning and Zoning has been working on a presentation. Frank McKenzie prepared some mapping for the county executive to present this, to, basically present it to legislators to say, hey, this is our issue. You are looking at our ag land for solar. It's eating up our ag land. But even more importantly, the solar that's proposed in our residential districts, the state is telling us, you need housing targets. We have a housing crisis. You need to promote housing, and at the same time, allowing solar to be in our residential zones as well. So, the presentation that, that Mr. McKenzie has done for the county executive is going to be pushed out to the legislators to see if there's something we can do. I, I don't want to give away, you know, her position on this, but I, I think it would be fair, and she would not, not mind me saying that. Her concern is that some of the benefits, the financial benefits that are given to the solar companies is what's kind of pushing them and promoting this. And I think that's the direction. We're going to try to target that at the federal level. But it's certainly something that we have on our radar screen, and we're actively pursuing arguments for.
Thank you.
Yes.
Joe, you stole my thunder. I was going to talk about the same thing. And just for the public's information, Senate Bill 931 was just passed this past, I guess, July?
Correct.
And it's, it becomes effective in October, October 1. And that is effectively stripped, to Mr. Holloway's point, stripped all the local authority for solar projects. Is it five megawatts and lower? I think it is.
It's, it's pretty much at every level. We have very little to no say. I mean, we used to have certain level solar projects that would go to the Board of Appeals for special exception. That's been stripped away. It, the, the bill is preemptive to local authority entirely. We have little to no say regardless of what level solar it is. We can write an objection to it being in certain areas, certain zones, but they can ignore our objection. So, you're correct. It, it has preempted local authority.
But to be, to be clear, it was written to give us authority. We, as a county, as a local body, as the Mako got involved, because we have zero ability to say no to these projects until, and that's basically the whole point of that bill, was to give us more power, not take it away. But that means we have to hit the 5% priority preservation area, which is the next piece that you're talking about. So, we've never had authority. Anything, a, anything that's considered a above two megawatts traditionally has been a, you know, a larger-scale project that's, but basically, the state can preempt us at any point in time. They can just go to the, you know, to.
Well, as it, as it, as it was, and I sat on the Planning and Zoning Appeals Board, and we heard a lot of solar projects.
Right.
And, and we called balls and strikes. I mean, I'm proud of the job that we did because we were sensitive to the residents and, and also to landowners and, and, you know, land, landowner rights. But that was, that was within our purview, and now it is not. I don't think that's correct.
That's correct.
Anything over two megawatts, you can go to the state and basically, just like you do for any other power plant or any other kind of thing, you can go through the CPCN process. And so, that's been the prob, the real problem has been that these companies have been going, and by the way, one megawatt is like five acres. So, a two-megawatt project is like 10 acres, nine and a half acres, give or take. So, basically, anything above 10 acres, give or take, has been, they've been able to go straight to the state and bypass all local authority. So, that bill was actually supposed to give us power that we've never had before, which is ability to say no.
I don't think that's.
No.
No, that's, that's accurate.
No.
No, that's not accurate. We don't, this new bill, we have zero authority.
No, the, it is, it starts at a five, I mean, we don't have to touch about this now, but it does, when it comes to this page, what we're about to talk about is basically the change to our priority preservation area. But basically, the, the Renewable Energy Certainty Act, that was specifically about trying to give us more power. If we hit 5%, if there's 5% of our priority preservation area covered in solar, we can then, from there on, go on and have a power that we've never had, which is to tell the solar companies to pound sand, which they can't currently do. They can just go right to the CPCN process, certificate of public necessity and concern and necessity, and they can, the state can just override us because we have a 14.5% carve-out within the, within the, the current renewable portfolio standard.
I know that when the bill was passed, and I was still serving on the board, and Mr. Illuminati was also our legal counsel, said what Ms. Taylor and I are both saying is that that power was stripped from the local appeals board.
Right. And Mako actually was not happy with the bill. Mako fought very hard against the bill and, and won a couple of arguments, but not the majority of the arguments. The, you're correct about the priority preservation, the 5%, but we're a long way from reaching that 5%. And unfortunately, the way the bill was passed, it said that it's 5% of our priority preservation area as it existed January 1 of this year. So, we did not even have the opportunity to revise our PPA, our priority preservation area. If we had had the opportunity to revise that, then I could see where it could have a more significant impact on us moving forward in the future once we reach the five. But our priority preservation area is the entirety of our A1 district. And if you take our A1 district, we don't even have the option of the PPA being reduced by, you know, all the undevelopable land, say wetlands, you know, easements, RCA, tier mapping at seven units per parcel. So, when you think about all of that, and you think about when you deduct all of that, it would have been nice if the legislation had incorporated 5% of PPA minus all of that. Then, we would have had a more achievable acreage. So, I would love to talk to you more about that legislation and how that affects our PPA, because it is an important point, Councilman Hastings. And I think that, I think one of the concerns that we have on our end is that the two-megawatt or below did used to have to go to the Board of Appeals for special exception, and the Board of Appeals was very strict in its interpretation and even denied some, whereas now we have no ability whatsoever to even take, well, we, we can't take any more to the Board of Appeals. There is no more special exception.
I guess on, on that note, I guess the only other question there is the MOUTH, you just started talking about MOUTH certification. I've said this for the last seven years. I would love to see us regain our MOUTH certification, but that has nothing to do with this. I mean, that, we have to change our zoning. That basically, Wycomico County is saying it does not care about agriculture. That's the way Wycomico County's currently zoning is put together. And until we, as a county, say, hey, we actually do care about agriculture, and we don't want to have sprawl housing developments in places like where I grew up in Athel, you know, which drive down, you know, drive down Athel Road, see what all the development. So, until we start saying that we actually do care about that, then I think the states, you know, then it'd be harder for us to regain our MOUTH certification. So, I would love to work with you, anything we can do to help support that, and I appreciate you going after that.
We are. And, and just for your information, if we regain, we do, we were certified at one time. We're not certified now. We lost our certification upon our review because of our, Councilman Hastings is correct, because of our zoning. They view our agricultural zoning as being too lax. Most of that is because the three plus one per 15. That's part of, it's not necessarily the strict one per 15, because other MOUTH-certified counties have a one per 15. It's because of the three inherent rates, plus one per 15. If we were to get recertified, our ability would be to retain 2/3 of the ag transfer tax. be to retain 2/3 of the ag transfer tax instead of 1/3, which would bring more money in for us to buy more easements. And I personally feel like it has to be a goal of the department and of this council to retain, or to get recertified. Part of that might be, once we do the comprehensive plan, we look at the comprehensive zoning, do a comprehensive rezoning of our zoning ordinance. Our zoning ordinance is very old. That's on my radar screen. But we also have to be able to make the argument to the community that, in reality, if we take away the 3 plus 1 per 15, we are still probably at a 1 per 20, 1 per 25 density when you think about the tier mapping and what we've got out there with the RCA with critical area. Again, that's a long conversation for another time, but please know that it's in my head, and it is on my radar screen ahead in that direction. We do have a PPA goal, priority preservation goal of 75%. Right now, we are at 64,000 acres preserved, or at 34.5%. We have an annual goal of preservation of 200 acres in our PPA, and then we have a 6,000-acre goal in our rural legacy. So we are working towards achieving, you know, those goals, annual goals with our preservation of our ag area and our open space. On Page 7, I highlight the fact that we're working on water and sewer, Councilman Holloway that you mentioned. We do have a water sewer work group. We meet every other week. That is Public Works and Adam Corey. And we, and with Amanda Pollak. And we are working on the implementation of some of the, you know, GMB study that was done.
Those meetings open?
They're staff-level meetings. We meet, yes, sir. We meet every other Monday, and we go through some of our projects, like the Mardella Springs, the Westside Project, and Parsonsburg, Pittsfield, and then like the Salisbury Donut Hole. So Amanda is our consultant and is really critical in leading us in that direction. It's primarily associated with failing septic, primarily. Then on Page 8, 9, or a lot of charts, I'm not going to go through all of those, except to point out that we had 10 minor subdivisions approved for 16 total lots in 2024. We only had one major subdivision approved for a total of 27 lots in 2024. On Page 9, again, this first table for 4B could be misinterpreted. You have a lot of zeros there. But actually, what the Maryland Department of Planning means by that, when they say total units approved on an existing lot, that's to account for 2 dwellings on a lot. Like if you were to allow granny flats or accessory dwelling units, that's what this chart is for. We did not have any of those. So you can see that when we added up major or minor, we end up at 43 lots that were approved with our subdivision activity only. The rest of our permits were our infill potential.
Can I ask a question about accessory dwelling units? That seems to be a big deal right now in Sussex County. I was listening to a radio show this morning. Is there anything on the horizon in Wycomico County about those?
Yes, we will be looking at that. And that's part of where the state is headed with some of their housing legislation in last session, and we expect a lot more this session. So we will be looking at accessory dwelling units, alternative forms of housing. And we'll also be looking at the bill that was passed that addresses manufactured and modular housing as well, and that needs to be permitted in the same zones as single family. We have not done that zoning ordinance update yet. We have a list of zoning ordinance text amendments that we're going to, we've already got scheduled, Mr. Illuminati and Clark Meadows and myself, to bring to the new county planning commission. So you can expect some of that in probably October, November range.
The law that states that if you have someone in your neighborhood that wants to repurpose their garage and turn it into another unit for a family member, that the state of Maryland is giving them a thumbs up on that, right?
They are. That's the direction they're headed. They want a variety of housing of different sorts permissible. But again, keep in mind, we have to comply with MD and Health Department regulations. That's going to be one of the biggest obstacles for the county.
Yeah, that's a good point. Does it supersede a homeowner's covenants, neighborhood covenants?
That's a good question. I'm not sure about that. That's something I'd have to, I'll make a note of that. It's something I'd have to look into.
That question's also been asked of me about modular or mobile homes that are allowed now on lots where they weren't before.
True.
Are they, is that going to supersede homeowners associations?
I will, I'll make a note of it, and I'll get back to you. Table 4D deals with our commercial site plans. We had 5 in 2024, and then we had 18 commercial building permits. And then you see the total amount of square footage that that encumbered. And then getting to the last page, it asks us if we have a bicycle and pedestrian plan. And we do within the 2022 Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, which our department is working with Wreckin Parks Director Miller right now on, we're getting ready to start the update for 2025. We just had our first kickoff meeting for that. Although we don't have a transportation functional plan, you know, we do have an operating MPO, which deals with many of our transportation studies and transportation issues. We did not submit a five-year mid-cycle report, because the county already previously submitted that report in 2022. So we weren't required to submit it again. And you only submit that when your plan is older than 5 years old. And we are, so that's why we submitted in 2022. Hopefully, by the next time we file this report, we will be either in the midst or have completed our draft of our comprehensive plan. We have a lot of planning activities going on. So you'll be seeing me quite a bit, I think, over the next year.
Very good.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Ms. Taylor, I'll break with protocol. You seem to have some advice at the podium. At the podium, Bob, Bob. At the podium, Bob, Bob. At the podium. Thank you.
I just happened to have been looking at the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that were, bill that was passed in General Assembly. Starting October of next year, we will have to have legislation that allows accessory dwelling units in any single-family neighborhood. It would trump restrictive covenants, or homeowners, or condo, if you had a land- dominium-type condominium. And that's going to be a big difference.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. I knew you could help us.
We're going to make a change, and we'll have to do legislation for it.
Understood. Thank you. There you go.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session. Well, we've already done that, but adjourn from open work session, go into closed session.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
We're going to take 5.